Welcome to our meeting. The date is January 28, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. Now, I ask you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Sheard will be absent. Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Noza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak will be absent. Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present.
Also present are the city clerk Jill Grenier, the city administrator Laura McElhoun, the finance director Matthew Gleason, the city attorney Carrie Fisk, the public works director Keith Kurtz, and the assistant city administrator CFO Patrick Brown. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Do council members wish to remove any item from tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Lanfair.
I would like to remove 7E.
7E is removed. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. Hearing no one else, we will continue with our agenda. The first item on our agenda is recognition of Sergeant Michael Nelson for 25 years of service with the city of Grand Island. Tonight, we come together and celebrate a remarkable milestone in the career of one of Grand Island's finest, Sergeant Mike Nelson. Mike began his journey with us on January 24, 2000, and his career has been marked by dedication, excellence, and integrity. Sergeant Nelson, since your promotion to sergeant in July of 2022, you've continued to lead by example, embodying the very best of what it means to serve our community. As Captain Jim Dering aptly put it, "Your work standard is higher than your considerable stature." Whether it's analyzing complex problems or tackling day-to-day challenges, you approach everything with patience, a positive attitude, and a steadfast focus. And while we've learned swimming may not be your strong suit, thanks to your time with the TRT, it is clear that you, your ability to dive into challenges and lead with purpose is second to none. Sergeant Nelson, on our behalf, the city of Grand Island, thanks you for 25 incredible years of service, and your dedication has made our city safer, and we look forward to the next chapter of your outstanding career. At this time, the city clerk, Mrs. Grenier and I, would like to present you with a certificate of appreciation and a pen from the city of Grand Island. Sergeant Nelson, this is your certificate for 25 years of service, and it states, "We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Michael Nelson for your loyalty, diligence, and dedicated service during your tenure with the city of Grand Island," signed by your chief, Kevin Denny, and by me as mayor. Congratulations, sir. We're going to get you situated for a photograph here shortly, but I just want to say a couple things. I want to thank your fellow officers for being here tonight for this occasion. Obviously, they think very highly of you. And I also want to give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, council persons. I am a very blessed man. For 25 years, it seems like it's gone by so quickly, I have been given the honor and privilege of being able to put a badge on in serving the citizens of this community. I do not take that lightly. Early on, father had told me through this journey, there's going to be a lot of challenges. You're not going to go at it alone. There'll be there, people there to help. And if I could, I'd like to point out a few of those people. Here in the front row is my beautiful wife, Melissa. Next month will be our 23rd wedding anniversary. Melissa, you have blessed me in so many ways. You truly are the cornerstone of my life. You blessed me with three beautiful children and more magical moments than Santa could put in his bag. Thank you. This is why I'm blessed. My sons Cameron and Tyson, you guys, wonderful people. I absolutely love watching you grow up, being there for the moments in sporting events and in other, just, just events. It is, it's been truly a blessing. I appreciate it. I love you. This is why I'm blessed. The gentlemen in back in uniform, these are the finest amongst us, the finest fathers, the finest leaders, the finest sons, the finest officers. This is why I am blessed, all right? 25 years, right? It's gone by quick. I've been asked, you know, how do you do 25? 1993, a coach named Jimmy Valvano was giving a speech that he titled "Never Give Up," right? Jimmy Valvano was the coach for NC State, let him do a national title in '83. Huge underdogs to Houston, who was had on their team, NBA greats, Hakeem Olajuwon, Clyde Drexler, overcame all of that to win the national title. Jump ahead 10 years, Jimmy's body's riddled with cancer, he's dying, and he gives a speech, and he's asked and he states three things. If a guy can do three things in a day, laugh, give some time to thought, have your emotions move you to tears, right? That's police work. We do that every day, right? And I get to do it in this city, a great city. This is why I'm blessed. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. What remarkable comments. Wow, that was very uplifting. The next item on our agenda is 6B, Grand Island Public Library, 2023-2024 Annual Library Report. Mrs. Swan.
Good evening, everyone, mayor and council and admin, and that's a tough act to follow, let me tell you. So lots of good vibes tonight with our annual library report that we do to kind of give you a feel for what's going on at the library for the past year. So one of our new library staff put this together, Sandy Cortez, she did a really great job. So by the numbers, you can see that our numbers are up, circulations are up, and audio and ebooks online are very popular, and they continue to grow every year. Collections change as things get outdated, like music CDs, and people are more into streaming, so you can kind of see the statistics there. And from the director's desk, just some things that are super popular are Art Elkhove. If you haven't got a library app yet, you can get that at the App Store, either Apple or Android, and put that on your devices, and you can link your library card, and you can link right to Libby and Overdrive, and you can listen to free audiobooks, check out magazines, movies, all kinds of really great things. So at the bottom of this director's desk report, it does say that the libraries, the library did apply for our accreditation with the Nebraska Library Commission, and we did receive gold, the gold this year, so that was something that when I told the staff, they were really pumped, and they jumped up and down and clapped, and that's due to having an amazing support system with the city and with our library board. We have a great library board. Mitch used to be on it, and then he quit, so we call him the quitter. But we have a great board, and tonight we have Sarah White here tonight. She's our library board president, and her family is, they broke statistics for having the most checkouts for the year. I think her daughter was like the number one reader one year, and so they've checked out about every book in the library, but, and we have a great library foundation, and everyone works together really well to get what's best for our library, so that's, that's a great thing. That's a fun thing to come to work to every day and to work with our staff. Our things, our programs with, for kids, they've been great. We've added some science kits and hands-on things like a telescope, things that families can come in that they might not have at home, and so those were real popular. And our partnerships with the community, so many of our partners give, you know, library free coupons for meals if you read. Every summer, we try to get more kids to read, and we got to get back into having more kids reading. Things kind of changed after COVID, but we're, we're hanging in there, and we're, we're working on them. And also, our teen programs have been really fun. Kids love to come in and go into the makerspace and do programs. Our adult programs have been really popular. One called Craft or New Nurse has been just always full. You can come in and with a group and take part in a class and, and learn some makerspace skills and make something cool and take it home. And Sarah wrote this about our library board, all the great work we've done over the past year, working on our strategic plan and also working on our library board policies, and our, our board really, they take part and they all give back, and I think we've done some amazing work together. Our library foundation, they supported the library this past year with $22,000 for programs and for crafts and food, whatever we needed to bring in authors, events, and this year they've upped that to 25,000, so we're very blessed for that. And that's about it in a nutshell, so it's a quick presentation, and this next year, things are going really well already, so if any of you guys have questions or concerns or feedback, just, I didn't hit the microphone tonight, did you notice that? I backed off a little bit, so.
Thank you for your presentation, and also congratulations on your Nebraska Library Commission Gold Cert, Gold Certification, and that is a, that's a five-year certification, isn't it?
Five years.
I know you worked very hard to make that happen, so that's a great victory. Thank you for doing that. Council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 7A through S, with the exception of 7E? Mr. Lanfair.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, A through S, with the exception of E.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
We will now take up consent agenda item 7E, approving contract for lobbyist services. Mrs. McElhoun.
Mr. Brown is going to.
Oh, Mr. Brown, you're, I'm sorry. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, council, good evening. First, before I start, I want to say the over and under bet for Slane hitting a microphone twice tonight, and I won that bet. So tonight, we have the lobbyist services item here. The Good Life District legislation, officially known as the Good Life Transformational Projects Act, was passed in '23 and amended in 2024. The Good Life District Economic Development Act was passed in '24 and created a voter-approved local tax revenue-funded economic development system that levered the tax capacity provided by state within an approved Good Life District. The Good Life Transformational Projects Act was adopted to promote and develop the general economic welfare of this state and its communities by providing support for unique Nebraska projects that will attract new industries, employment opportunities, further grow and strengthen Nebraska's retail, entertainment, and tourism industries. The legislature determined that the Good Life Districts will encourage transformational development projects within the state that create jobs and infrastructure and other improvements and attract and retain tourists and college graduates from around the state. Such projects will, A, generate new economic activity, B, create new economic opportunities and jobs for residents, and C, promote new-to-market retail, entertainment, and dining attractions. The Good Life District legislation presents a forward-thinking approach to local economic development and public-private partnerships, leveraging transformational projects to foster economic and tourism growth. However, there has been news about the possibility of repealing the Good Life District program. City administration recommends hiring a lobbyist to help protect the Good Life District in Grand Island and voter-approved local economic development program and funding stream. Action needs to be taken as soon as possible, since bills have already been submitted to dissolve the program. The city has solicited professional services from two lobbying firms without conflicts of interest and one declined representation due to existing client workload. The second firm, Jensen Rogert Associates out of Lincoln, is available and submitted the attached professional services contract proposal. The fiscal impact is $3,000 a month, not to exceed $30,000 for the year. City administration recommends that the council pass a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the contract for lobbying services with Jensen Rogert Associates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Daryl Poles, would you like to speak on this?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Boy, oh, boy. The newspaper we have in town really doesn't do a lot of good things, but they did publish an editorial cartoon last week on Election Day. I think it's a Martin Luther King quote. "We need leaders not in love with money, but in love with justice." This Good Life District is supposedly transformational, and yet it's simply retail rental and a gymnasium. That's basically it. And if you look at the preliminary plot, the little picture that was available on the website, I've seen housing like that in Chicago back in the day before they tore it down. I've seen it also in Germany in certain locations. This, having to lobby, this, this law should be, it should be crystal clear if it's a good thing. If the Good Life project, if these are good things or not, it should be in, just self-evident, and it's not, and it's, and there's reasons for that, as I mentioned. It's not transformational. This transformational word that gets floated around is simply, as Colonel Potter would have said, that's horse hockey. We have, and people say, well, it's, it's the law, it was passed, it's okay. Well, you know, slavery was legal at one time. Not allowing women to vote was legal at one time. So this really needs to be looked at, and we have a state senator that is supposed to be representing Grand Island in Lincoln. And why we are passing a buck to a lobbyist is simply, it stinks. It really stinks. If Good Life Districts, the one in Gretna has gotten a terrible reputation because of this grand plan that somebody came up with and everybody bought into it. It reminds me of the hands Christian Andersen, I think, wrote the story about the swindlers that sold the magic cloth that only the very smart people could see. And it's, and so that has tainted this, and we got a state deficit of over $400 million, which this is detracting from. And it is, it is just beyond the pale that we would, this city would spend an extra $3,000 a month on a lobbyist when we have a state senator who is supposed to be representing this district. So I would, I would ask that you reconsider this expenditure. Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, is there a motion concerning consent agenda item 7E? Mr. Lanfair.
And I make a motion that we do not, do not approve hiring a lobbyist.
And is there?
By hand, and is so moved.
Mr. Lanfair's motion fails for lack of a second. Mr., Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2025-19.
Mr. Stelk.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. In my career, not too long ago, I was, worked in the cable industry, and I was the president of the Nebraska Cable Association. I didn't have a big thing about lobbyists beforehand, other than what you hear about federal lobbyists, and you hear all kinds of stories, but, so I wasn't a big fan of lobbyists until I was the president of the Nebraska Cable Association, and I spent every day down in the legislature, and I spent all the time with them. And since then, we've introduced term limits, and so I think that has increased the need for lobbyists even more. Somebody really has to have institutional knowledge, and it doesn't happen with term limits, and so that's where the lobbyists become more important to things. The other thing is, if the city wants to be represented in any, at any level, you need to have somebody there. Now, it might be somebody here that goes down there, or it might be somebody that's already there and a lobbyist. I really have a great respect for what the lobby industry does in Nebraska because of term limits, and I think the need for the city to be represented is far more important, you know, and so I believe in it, I support the motion, and I think it's the right thing to do for right now.
Mr. Nickerson.
I think Jerry brings up some good points that we, we need to be aware of, and I appreciate Jerry with you always sharing your insight. I don't even see him right now. There he is. I do have a couple of questions. I need to go to the very hist, the beginning of this, because but for this being on the agenda tonight, I had heard nothing about it. And for those of you that are aware of it, do we know why it's being reconsidered at the state level at this time? Is it the Gretna thing that's created such a distaste for it, or is there something bigger than that?
There are a couple of reasons, as we understand it. Since we do not currently have a dedicated lobbyist representing us, we've had to glean information from other cities lobbyists and from the league. So in part, it's in the budget, the governor's budget message to repeal it as part of his proposal to reduce state spending. But also in part, the governor's office and state senators have been lobbied heavily by at least one of the project applicants to do away with it because the city didn't approve his original proposal, which included condemnation by the city of property, private property, that would then be turned over to that developer. property, that would then be turned over to that developer. So as we understand it, as it has been explained to us, that has been the reason why the bills have been introduced to do away with it. There's a significant bill introduced that creates a completely new and different form of a Good Life District, only it's called Community Something, but it essentially gives a private individual, the applicant, the authority to act as the governing body, to impose taxes, to condemn property, and to use all those public taxes and public purposes for private gain. It would, that bill that's been proposed on behalf of the Gretna applicant actually disincorporates a city when the, when a Good Life District is formed, or not a Good Life District. The new, frankly, the term that the League has been using is Disney, because supposedly it's patterned after Disney in Florida. But it takes a lot of, it takes the elected authority, the elected officials' authority away from them, still imposes taxes, and allows a private person to use those taxes. So there's a lot of interests at play here, and that's really why we've made the recommendation that Grand Island hire its own lobbyists to make sure that Grand Island's message of we're working together with our applicant to make this project go forward. We had nearly 70% voter approval of the local tax to replace the state tax. So our citizens clearly believe in the project and what could happen with it and the benefit it would bring to us. So we don't want to see everything go away because of some special interests, and our voice is not being heard, and we're not, we don't have a seat at the table. City staff cannot possibly spend the entire legislative session in Lincoln. We need to be here, doing our jobs here, and we need that additional help from the lobbyists to do that.
Do we know how much steam this is getting at this point?
Getting a substantial amount of steam.
What a bit? Okay. I also wonder, once you've started a program, what do you do with those programs that have been approved, and you've started collecting tax money, and you're actually starting to move forward to it? The ability to just pull the plug on that on the community, those are the questions I don't know. I suppose you can do whatever you want. Which brings me to my next question, and that would be, I understand the effectiveness of a lobbyist when you're representing many people, many groups. I can understand that. I'm curious about the effectiveness of a lobbyist representing just one group against 49 senators. What, what is that effectiveness and the confidence that we have in that type of effectiveness of one lobbyist versus 49 senators?
Well, one is the relationships that the lobbyists currently have with elected officials. Mr. Rogert is a former state senator, very familiar with Grand Island. He actually was in the unicameral when Grand Island successfully lobbied for and convinced the legislature that we could build a state fair campus here in a very short amount of time, and so understands the dedication of Grand Island's citizens to doing big projects when we need to do big projects. But also, he has significant relationships with the Revenue Committee, which is who would be hearing the bills, and would work in concert with the lobbyists that have been hired by the League of Nebraska Municipalities and the City of Gretna to make sure that city and taxpayer interests, local taxpayer interests, are being protected throughout the legislative session as they work to draft legislation. Because there are a number of questions about power and authority, and what happens if we've already done this and local voters have already approved that. There's constitutional issues, clearly. So all of those lobbyists banded together would be working on the same side to make sure that the city's messages are getting conveyed to the state senators.
So you inferred, but I just need to ask again, the League of Municipalities is in support of this?
They are, they are currently taking the same position as the City of Gretna, which is the same position that city staff have been conveying to the League, that Grand Island voters approved this. We're, we're moving forward on making this transformational project happen, and we don't want to see it destroyed, nor do we want to create risk for the city. If the state were to reimpose the state tax, what happens to the local tax? We've, we've actually already budgeted to spend some of that money. So most notably, most recently, on the master planning process. So there is potential harm to the city if the program just goes away completely.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lanfair.
First, I am, which has nothing to do whether the Good Life District is good or bad, or we should push it forward. I think it's totally inappropriate for one municipality, one city, to try and lobby its interest over the state. This is something that goes beyond our borders. You brought up the Nebraska League of Municipalities. If they got a lobbyist to push it, that would be appropriate. But for one city to go this far, that's a waste of city money. Plus the fact he, Mr. Poole, bringing out, we have a state senator we could lobby. And I also think it's in our mayor's job description to go down and talk to the legislature. I also think it's our city administrators. So we have other options than to pay out $3,000 a month for a lobbyist. Thank you.
Mr. Stelk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly support this resolution. I think it's a game changer for Grand Island. I've said that from day one. I think as a community, we need to get behind this and back it and support it. I lobbied for the last 15 or 20 years down in Lincoln, and state senators are easy to talk to. They're people just like us. You, you tell them a little bit about your world and where you're coming from. You tell them about the bill that you're looking at, and you give them the pluses and minuses, and you ask them to consider your position. And I think we need to maybe everybody get together and talk to the 49 state senators and try to convince them that this is a good thing for Grand Island, and we want to keep it. And I wholeheartedly support the lobbying group because it's very effective. They're good people. They know what they're doing, and I just think we need to back them and move on with this. We can't put our head in the sand and just say, well, we're going to let it go. No, this is a life changer for Grand Island. I think we need to come to the plate and just say, hey, our community wants this. We voted for it. We voted 70%. Our, our motion didn't pass by 14 votes like some other city did. Ours was a complete support by the community, and I think we, as a council, we need to vote again, vote for it, and do everything we can to get this to pass the legislature. Thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
I think I'd just point out, too, based on what I heard from Patrick tonight, that the $3,000 a month, if for some reason this thing did fall apart in Lincoln, we wouldn't be out $30,000, depending on the day that that was decided. So we may be out $3,000 a month times X number of months, but it may not be 30 grand. But in the interim, we'll have somebody there that will be working on our behalf, in our best interest, to see what we can do. But surely hate to see this thing go backwards after all the work that went into it so far.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Council members will now take up our public hearings. 8A, Public Hearing Request from Prairie Commons Hospitality LLC, DBA Spring Hill Suites by Marriott, 3604 Prairie View Street, for a Class C liquor license. Mrs. Grenier.
Thank you, Mayor. An application for a Class C liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on January 3, 2025. A notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on January 18, 2025. A notice, a notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on January 3, 2025, along with Chapter 4, City Code Alcoholic Beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspections. Public hearing is now opened. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Is there a motion regarding Resolution 2025-34? Mr. Lanfair.
I move we approve Resolution 2025-34.
Mr. O'Neill. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8B, Public Hearing on Acquisition of Utility Easement, 3417 Weaver Street in 88 LLC. Mr. Schmitz, please present for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a 10-foot easement in Legacy 34 Fifth Subdivision to serve Outlet 8. Thank you.
Public hearing is now opened. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Resolution 2025-35. Is there a motion? Mr. Lanfair.
I move we approve Resolution 2025-35.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8C, Public Hearing on Acquisition of Utility Easement, 1119, 1122, 1123, 1126, 1127, 1130, 1131, 1134, 1135, Sun Valley Drive, and 909 and 915 Nebraska Avenue, Island Grand Rentals. Mr. Schmitz.
Mr. Mayor, this is a series of five-foot easements to serve Pleasant View 14th Subdivision, which sits just north of Foner Park, kind of northeast of the fieldhouse up there.
Public hearing is now opened. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Resolution 2025-36. Is there a motion? Mr. Lanfair.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-36.
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8D, Public Hearing on Redevelopment Plan Amendment, CRA Area Number 2, south of Lake Street and east of Knott Avenue, Dunstar Holdings LLC. Mr. Navaty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bring this up here. This property is located on Knott Avenue and Lake Street. If anybody remembers where the Valentine Motel was, this is just on the backside of it, across from Walmart South, just south of the Comfort Suites down there by Walmart South. There are two lots there at that corner that have been purchased by Dunstar Holdings. Dunstar Holdings is a subsidiary of the Storozka Group, so it is the Storozkas that are doing this project. They are proposing to build a three-plex and a four-plex at that location. It's Zoned R3, medium-density residential. The lots are 15,000 square feet, and so they could put as many as five units on each, but given the size and shape of the lots, three units, three and four units really work better within what they're planning on doing. They are looking at this as workforce housing. These units are about $170,000 apiece. As workforce housing, they are eligible for TIF to actually help build those units. They are requesting $329,000 worth of TIF over the course of the 15 years. The Planning Commission did find that this area is planned for this kind of development, and that it would be appropriate there, and the CRA has forwarded the plan to the city for consideration. If you approve this this evening, the city will, or the CRA, will enter into a contract for redevelopment and to get those additional seven units there. This is also right across the street from where Rama Kalauru was planning on doing his 150 units. He is still moving forward with that project, just slower than he had anticipated.
Thank you, Mr. Navaty. Mr. Zach Butts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Chad, as always, for a fantastic summary on the project. I'd like to thank the CRA and the Regional Planning Board as well for their support in the process thus far. Not only does this project meet the standards, the regional planning is set forth for conformance with the comprehensive plan. They were enthused by it because we've got an empty infill lot. There has not been development on this lot, I think, ever, at least in recent memory, in several generations, and through multiple owners, it's continued to sit empty. And we have an opportunity now to rectify that, and to rectify that with a proven and successful product. As Chad mentioned, Dunstar's, at the end of the day, is a Storozka entity. This is sort of the next generation of the Storozka family, jumping in and getting involved in their family business, which for years has been development and growth and terrific housing for the city of Grand Island. The CRA has evaluated and approved the financials on this project. They've looked at the request and feel it's reasonable for the product that's going to be put out. The Storozkas, as I'm sure you're aware, they have a sort of proven formula for success with the housing that they put out. And what they're planning to build on here is frankly not something that would be feasible on this type of lot without the public-private partnership of TIF and the money that the city would ultimately provide through that. The rental rates, if we did this without TIF, would be about $1,600 a month, which wouldn't necessarily be supported by that particular market. With TIF, we're able to save the customers, the clients, about $250 a month, about $3,000 a year, which is, we've certainly talked about tonight, $3,000 is not an insignificant amount of money, and for the folks that are going to be renting this, that's a difference-maker. This project is what we want from TIF. We get good development for the city. We take an empty lot that's done nothing productive for years. We put quality housing on it that the city needs. This meets a need. It conforms to the standards that have been set, and we ask for your approval on it tonight. I'm happy to answer any broad questions. We've got a couple of direct representatives here that can get super project-specific if you want. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Butts.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Hossi.
I would move to approve Resolution 2025-37.
Mrs. Mendoza.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I had mentioned this at a prior council meeting, but, you know, TIF is what has been used in this community for a long time to get housing, much-needed housing, built. The but-for clause, would they be building them without it? And the answer is, maybe not. Maybe they'd build a few, but we are short of houses. And TIF has been one of the tools that the city has had that can support and promote the use and the development of houses. This is one that's actually on a lot that hasn't been developed in forever, a long time. You know, and so I'm grateful to see it there. I'm glad that it's going. I think my concerns as we look forward, as we keep looking forward, this per-unit TIF is $47,000, $48,000 a unit. We saw one in Caro at $18,000 or $16,000, and so it's getting close to $50,000 a unit, and I don't know where the limit is, but I think we're getting there. I think we're getting to the point that we have to start trying to decide how much can we afford? How much do we need the house? How much can we afford in TIF? So I think we're getting close to that fulcrum where we need to look at it closer, but at this one, I want to go ahead and support it at this time. this one, I want to go ahead and support it at this time.
Mr. Lanfair.
I believe that we have given out way, way too much TIF. It's starting to hurt the ordinary taxpayers of Grand Island, so I will not be voting for any project, development project, that has TIF connected.
Mr. Nickerson.
I too will support this tonight. One of the things that I, that I look at, that I find myself looking at more, is what is the percentage of public-to-private investment here? And to me, it's just a general rule of thumb in my mind, I like to see that four to one, where we've got about $4 of private for every $1 of public. I think that's a good place to start. I really like it when it's five, or six, or seven, which we have seen fives and six. This one's not quite the four to one. This is like 359 or something like, pretty close. Not enough to concern me, but I think that percentage of cooperation and partnership is important to me because it tells me how much are we really funding of this. In this case, we're funding a little over 20% of that. Typically, I'd love to see those even less, and we have seen some, but this one is, falls within the guidelines that I, that I look at, and I think, again, housing is important here. We're looking for places for people to live. The $250 deduction in rent as a part of this is also a positive thing, and we always want to do what we can there.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8E, Public Hearing on 2025 Comprehensive Development Plan for Grand Island. Mr. Navaty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, we started on the comprehensive development plan. Our last full update of the comprehensive plan was in 2004, 20 years ago. We did not do one, ideally, and I've said this before, many of you have heard this, ideally, we should update the plan about every 10 years. But when you think about where we were at in 2012, when we'd have started working on this budget-wise, there was no way I could come forward to you and ask you to approve the cost of a comprehensive plan. So we handled things internally. We made modifications as staff and brought those forward. Council approved those. We did those things. Quite frankly, that's what we get paid to do. But when it's time to do a major update, you saw your packet this week. Here is the draft of the comprehensive plan, and it includes a lot of things, from housing to parks to utilities, to health, and hazard mitigation. A lot of the things that you see in discrete parts are incorporated into this plan. And this plan, you may wonder, okay, how does it get used? What do you really do with it? Well, these plans sit on my desk. If you've been in my office, right behind my chair is my set of comprehensive plans, and when somebody comes in and says, "I'd like to develop a piece of property, and I'd like to do this with it," the first thing I do is grab my plan, get out the maps, and say, "Well, what's the future land use map say for this? What is the intent for this property at some point in the future?" And that's where we begin talking. And when I make recommendations to you on rezonings, you'll see that I reference the comprehensive plan and reference, here's what the, here's what the policy for this property is. So that's what this plan does, is it sets that policy so we know where development's going to happen and how development is going to happen. It is then also absolutely essential if we are going to have zoning in the community. Without zoning, without a comprehensive plan in Nebraska, a city is not allowed to have a zoning regulation. This is the public document, the policy document, that ties the use of controlling people's property to the public benefit. Why are we doing that? And what are we trying to achieve? Those things are built into this. You'll see lots of goals, lots of things that we can do over the next 15, 20 years as we're, as we are achieving the ends in this plan. And with that, we will look at, soon, bringing forward new zoning regulations that update things like ADUs, accessory dwelling units. If you've looked at LB458, the state is once again saying, attempting to say, "We are going to preempt cities." And we are going to tell you, as a city, that you have to allow ADUs anywhere you allow single-family homes. You have to allow duplexes anywhere you allow single-family homes. And you have to change your regulations to allow it, or you have to follow this set of regulations that we've put into place. That's in there. The hearing on that is on Thursday, in front of the Revenue Committee. So we're trying to address some of those things proactively in a way that works for the city of Grand Island, and this plan is a way to make that happen. With that, I would like to turn this over to John Shepherd. He's got a very high-level discussion of this, probably 20 minutes or so, right, John? Maybe? And then we'll be open for questions, and I know Mr. Poles wants to comment as well, so.
And Mr. Navaty, the Plant, the Planning Commission has approved.
They did recommend approval of this. Thank you, Mayor. They held a public hearing two weeks ago and made a recommendation that the council should approve this plan as proposed. I would ask, we did have a Appendix D in here, and that was for the Veterans Property in the Good Life District, and that plan, originally, we were hoping would be presented to you tonight for you to forward to the Planning Commission. If you approve this this evening, I would ask that we remove Appendix D from the, from the plan, and as we move forward with that, we may add Appendix, we will add Appendix D back in.
Appendix D is a placeholder.
It's a placeholder, correct.
Thank you. My name is John Shepherd. I'm a senior planner with Marvin Planning Consultants of David City, Nebraska, that we've been working with Chad and the Regional Planning Commission for just over two years on this project, that I've gotten to know Grand Island. I've gotten to spend a lot of time in your library here, and hopefully that we've got something that reflects your community through this process. Again, Marvin Planning Consultants, Keith Marvin, our, of Marvin in our name, is typically here. He had a public hearing in another community tonight. Myself, I've been with the firm just over two years, that I've known both, both Keith and Chad through the American Planning Association. They're both active at the national level, and convinced me to leave Colorado for Nebraska, so. The, it's, I do say it's warmer than where I grew up in Fargo, so. We also have in our firm, Mason Herman, who does a lot of the mapping, and we've worked with the staff here on that. And Spencer Lemon has recently joined our firm. So we've gone through this project in a comprehensive manner, that we're actually working with the Regional Planning Commission on comprehensive plans for Hall County, Grand Island, Alda, and Donovan, that the Regional Planning Commission, as Chad mentioned, did recommend adoption of this Grand Island Comprehensive Development Plan at public hearing on January 8th of this year. Hall County, after a recommendation of adoption, Hall County adopted by the county board on New Year's Eve, that when you have football waiting for you, you never get through a public hearing so fast, so. Appreciate their support of that document. Village of Alda Board has scheduled a public hearing next week for February 4th, and the Village of Donovan Board adopted their plan on January 13th, all after recommendations from the Regional Planning Commission, that we are already moving on implementation, looking through the zoning regulations, updating them. A lot of it's simply format. Over a period of 20 years, that what we find useful in our documentation changes, that we're working through Hall County, we're working on the villages, and then we'll be working with the, with the, on the city's zoning. Part of that is because of your, the way that you implement your regulations through UniCode and the new company now. It takes a little extra work, but one thing we do is take our standard procedures and then make sure to craft those to how the community works through them. I worked for a long time as a zoning administrator, so the first, one of the first things I think of is, how can you make this easier to administer for staff, for the elected officials, as well as the property owners? So the comprehensive development plan, that we have 16 chapters. Each of these, some of these elements are required by statute. Others, such as public health and livability and sustainable development, are fairly new, that we've crafted those again to the needs of Hall County and Grand Island. We also have the appendix, appendices that Chad mentioned. I'm going to go briefly over each of these chapters. You've had an opportunity to see this. We've gone through this with the Regional Planning Commission, but I really want, what I really want to talk to you about is, so what are you going to do about it? At the end of the day, how does this make your life easier? How does this make things more useful to the community? The comprehensive plan begins with the first chapter, its introduction. We do some history. I'd write a whole chapter on history if Keith Marvin would let me, but we talk a little bit about from the founding of Grand Island through the history up until today. But in every plan, we talk about this process for adoption. We have public hearings before the Regional Planning Commission and the city council tonight, that the, the plan requires recommendation by the Regional Planning Commission, requires adoption by city council. That we document our community engagement. We talk about our different participation methods from the project works, website, focus groups, town hall meetings, the surveys that we did, both for the city and for the county, that we talk about additional plans, some of the things that we did through this process, that we did some early work on affordable housing and getting things, the housing plans up to date. You're also going through a housing process, planning process now, that we completed a market analysis. That document is referenced through the plan and housing and economic development and other areas. We're also including that plan, adopting by reference, and it will be available in the appendices. We try to look at, we've got over 200 pages of text. We want that to be useful, but we also want to make sure that you have this reference material to use as you need it. That's one of the nice things about mostly, most folks using the plans as a PDF online, it's a lot easier to have more information, but we also want to have a document that's straightforward and useful. The other thing about the community engagement chapter, and one thing that I say throughout the planning process, comprehensive development plan, in this century, is not the city telling people what to do. It's not the consultants telling people what to do. We are documenting what people have told us. They want the city to do. We ask people at the town hall meetings, in the focus groups, and in the surveys, what does the city of Grand Island need to do? What does Hall County need to do so that it's worth your hope, sweat, and tears to invest in this community? If you're going to live here and raise your children, or have them come back to the community, if you're going to invest in real estate and programming and the arts and culture, what do we need to do? Well, as you imagine, they told us. They told us a lot of things. There are a lot of things you're already doing. There are some things that frankly, we probably can't afford to do, but we've tried to give you a toolbox of things. Now, I think we've had, in Keith Marvin talks about, he's had one time when a county called him and said, "We're done. What do we do?" This is a 20-year plan. We're going to give you 20 years' worth of stuff to work on. Some of those you're going to get done. Some of those you're already doing. Other things you're going to think about, and maybe there's an opportunity five years from now, or 10 years from now. And so let's talk a little bit about that. So, one of the things, I look at a comprehensive plan as a business plan. It's a strategic plan for the city. We start out with, well, what do we know about the city? We know about the population, that over the last generation, last two generations, Grand Island has been growing. Maybe not recently, there's a lot of things, other things going on with employment and housing. It's hard to gain more population when they don't have any place to live. We know about that. But over the long term, you've got problems that cities across this state would love to have. Part of that comes into when we look at the combination of housing and economic development. The two are intertwined now more than ever. So we look at these things and how they're related, that one of the things we come up with is very detailed goals, policies, and action items, that you'll see throughout the plan from housing forward, that we talk about goals, big-picture items. We talk about policies. These are really things that you can use when you're reviewing development proposals, that are the, are you prioritizing public funding for projects which incorporate affordable missile, missing middle and workforce housing? You talked about that in one of the early public hearings tonight. These are always, there's always balancing of interests, but this gives you something to come back for on each project. Is this helping advance policies of the comprehensive plan? So in each of these, this is, this ties back to this matrix. So we have goals, we have policies, we have action items. Some of these action items are things you're already doing. Some of them are going to be things to think about. Action item 414, revised zoning regulations to encourage housing variety and affordability, including ADUs. As Chad mentioned, we're already working on that. So that's going to be part of how we immediately implement the comprehensive plan. So I'm not going to go through in detail on each one of these chapters. You have the information there. They've been vetted by the Regional Planning Commission as well. But I want to illustrate, our focus is on implementation. Implementation is the watchword in this project and this plan. So we've got, we have three pages of economic development, and now we're not saying that Chad has time to work on this, but we are recognizing the things that are already going on with Grand Island area economic development and the Chamber of Commerce and the CVB. Understand, you're going to be going through a strategic planning process, immediate implementation of materials in the comprehensive plan. Again, we're not telling you what to do. This is what the people said that they want to see you do. So we're already, we're already there. The middle of the plan talks about the things in Grand Island, facilities, parks and rec, public safety, public health and livability. When we look at facilities, that you have a public trust for city hall here, that on the front page of this, of the community facility, is we put the Stur Museum. You're not going to tell them what to do, but we want to recognize what an important part that those public facilities, historic sites and places, and education have to do with the future of Grand Island. People are not going to move here if your schools aren't able to respond to the challenge that they have. I was amazed at what your school district does here. The public school district, the Northwest area, they've got a tough job. Let's recognize, when we make land use decisions, those affect the schools one way or the other. As I mentioned, we did some mapping, Mason Herman, that we had great support from, from the Regional Planning Department. One of the reasons this took us a little longer is, once we started doing the mapping, we wanted to suss out some things. We needed to update some of the annexation boundaries and information. This material will be available through the GIS system as well, so that the planning department can continue to use this to make decisions, to make recommendations going forward. But we mapped out public facilities. We mapped out your historic sites. So when you're looking at a subdivision proposal, is that going to impact your public facilities? Is that going to impact historic sites in the areas? And there's a lot more maps in there. And there's a lot more maps in there, I'm a map guy, so I would've showed them all to you, but I know you've got other things you need to do tonight. So, we have the goals and policies for Parks and Rec. One of the things back here on this, I, I do wanna say, we had an excellent time talking to folks at the library, I've used your library here as a remote office when we've been working. Your library is an amazing success story for a community of this size that doesn't have a full-time four-year university backing it up. I'm just super impressed by the work you've done, the Makerspace in there, lot, lot bigger cities don't have those resources. So, anyways, great library. The Parks and Rec chapter here, one of the things that, that we got through this process, we went through, we did our inventory, we looked gen, very general, big picture, we looked at, well, how do you meet with some national standards? But your Parks Department was already working on a Parks and Rec master plan. One of the things that we did through that process was harmonize the data. You saw, we had some information on population and housing and economic development. We made sure when we were looking at future projections, well, we have some standard projections, they had some projections, let's see where we look at that, because all we know about projections is they're gonna be wrong, but if you're prepared for really good and really bad, you're probably okay somewhere in the middle. What we tried to do with Parks and Rec was look at, what are the facility needs at the up, upside, and what do you need to do to make sure your parks can support themselves in case things stagnate? We don't have the detail that they do, but the two plans should at least support each other. Chapter eight, public safety, law enforcement, fire department, EMS, again, we had great interviews, information from your, from your folks, the police chief who's here earlier gave us some really interesting insights. Again, we're not gonna tell them what to do, we're gonna say, hey, when you're reviewing projects, you need to recognize that more population has an impact on law enforcement and the fire department, and we need to work closely with those folks as we go forward. Public health and livability, this chapter, we went over and above what we typically do, because Chad said this was something people in the community were interested in. And again, we had a great conversation with Central District Health Department, they do a lot of planning, some of it's required, some of it is simply, they're trying to pull a lot of people together to, for the best use of resources in supporting public health. That, that they were really encouraged on trying to keep a conversation together, they said there's a lot of people doing things, and they try to coordinate with things, and it's tough. We're learning some things from the last few years, and hopefully, with a new plan and their work, that you can keep that cooperation going forward. We also looked at some of the levers of change, that things that go on, things like the farmer's market, aren't just the land use decision about how that operates, but about the ability of you, of citizens in your community to have access to local food. There are other transportation and issues about being, folks who can't drive and how can they access local foods, and this is how, again, the comprehensive plan all relates, if we did it right. We're not gonna solve all the problems, we're giving you some ideas that you can choose from, and maybe one out of ten of those, there can be something you can have an impact on. But it's something that you can pick up and run with tomorrow, next week. And so here's some of those ideas we came up with. Communications, utilities, and energy, energy is a required element, we looked at hazard mitigation, we looked at sustainable development. We put these in one chapter, 'cause they tend to be related, communications related to utilities, utilities related to energy, that we talked about the newspaper and TV and radio, we talked about the broadband, again, we're not gonna tell them what to do, but recognize that those have an impact both on your quality of life and your ability to support and maintain economic development. We talked about the, the current utilities, your city utilities, and also within the, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, that two-mile buffer. We talked very generally about energy use and generation statewide, but also, we tried to talk to your utilities about big picture issues. Now, they have to do very detailed capital improvements planning and other things, and they're constrained by national and international trends, but we're trying to look at, how does this relate in general, so that you can look at, what do you need to do to better coordinate private and public development? So we have different things in those areas to do. Hazard mitigation, what we try to do is recognize the land use impacts for your FEMA-adopted hazard mitigation plan, that you have folks who work for the city who are very involved with the Central Platte Natural Resources District Hazard Mitigation Plan. We wanna recognize that work that's being done and talk about the land use impacts. We're not gonna tell FEMA what to do, but FEMA is, FEMA has more need than money, and when you're looking at a FEMA grant, when you're applying for a FEMA grant, one of the first things FEMA's gonna look at, have you incorporated your hazard mitigation plan with your comprehensive plan? Yes, you checked off a box, but you, that likely puts you into the next category of conformance, and we know going forward, those grants are gonna be even more competitive. I also talk about floodplain administration, that that's one of many hats Regional Planning has, and you have a history of flood events, but also a history of being active in flood mitigation. So we wanna talk a little bit more about that, we're not, it's not a shall, it's a here's some things to look at. But we also wanna recognize FEMA changes those rules regularly, and staff needs to have the support to keep up with that training. I found Nebraska is actually very supportive of floodplain management and training, much so, more than some of the other states I've worked in. So, you're actually getting some good support out of Lincoln, at least in floodplain management. Sustainable development, chapter twelve, again, we tried some new things here, we looked at some ideas. Now, we did more than we've done in some other more rural counties, but this is not Boulder, Colorado, or even Lincoln, Nebraska. We tried to look at some things that were already going on here, some things you might wanna look at. These are ideas. We also, this is a place where we put information on conservation-preservation easements, those are things that the county and the city look at within their jurisdictions, but you can't do that unless you've incorporated it in your plan. And Chad was very careful about the language we use to incorporate in the comprehensive plan, so that it's going to give you the flexibility and the guidance that's necessary for reviewing those easements and metrics. So the heart of the plan is land use section here, that this is required by statute, but we've tried to flesh that out. We did an extensive existing land use inventory. In the smaller communities like Alda and Donovan, we drive every street in town. Here, we tried to use your existing information in the G I S system. If I haven't said it already, you've got a really amazing G I S support system here, we tried to use that, but we still had to spot-check a lot of places where things may have changed, where it wasn't real clear. We spent a good amount of time in an iterative process with staff to make sure that we understood and we had the right categories, so that you could make the best use of existing land use, also so that that translated into future land use decisions. We also looked at some general categories with community characters, signage, and wayfinding. You've got some great wayfinding in the rail site district. Well, how can we use that in the rest of the city? How might Fourth Street do something similar, but that fits them? That we looked at some ways, how can we incorporate some mixed, more mixed-use development out of the neighborhoods, things people told us, they'd like to be able to walk and buy a, a half gallon of milk if they could, well, you can do that poorly, but a lot of places are trying new things to do what people have done, as long as there've been cities. So we have these future land use categories, we have the existing land use map, we've translated that into policy with future land use. We also compared this to zoning, but land use is not zoning. Land use is, what do we wanna be when we grow up? This is not telling somebody, hey, you have to develop this for mixed-use commercial, saying, hey, if you wanna do something, this would be a great place for mixed-use commercial. We also customize these categories to fit Grand Island. They're not the same that we did in Kimball, Nebraska, or that I did when I worked in Colorado, they're unique to your community. So this is the future land use map that we came up with. This is something new for us, that we used an Arc G I S feature to do a map atlas, because you're long and narrow from top to bottom, you've also got the Cornhusker Army ammunition plant, which is mostly in the county, but in the city, in your extraterritorial jurisdiction, so we wanted to make sure that those were, those came together without a gap. So we, we went into more detail on that. Now, some areas, like around the airport, that's industrial area, 'cause you don't want people sitting underneath your flight pattern. Most of that's already zoned industrial, those already fit. Once that develops out, it's probably gonna be industry, not, not households. There's some areas that we looked at, well, what's a current map along Highway two-seventy-five? And said, well, there's been some demand for more mixed-use development, let's look at some of that in that area. We're not trying to tell the market what to do, that we're trying to, that from what we listen to, this is what the market's telling us where they wanna go, but it also then is a tool for the city, for the engineering department, for the guys who design your water and your sewer and your electric, to look at that going, yeah, yeah, we can get water there, or, yeah, we can, but it's gonna cost that developer a lot of money. This is not saying the city's gonna extend the infrastructure, they're saying, these are places we've heard people wanna build, so, let's see what we can do to make those successes, so we can get more rooftops, more places where people can live and work in Grand Island. Again, this is not regulatory, that'll be zoning, this is, yeah, this is where we'd like to go, and if a couple of years from now, that doesn't work out, then we'll rev up the, the G I S map and do an update. That we have several pages of land use policies and actions, again, these are things you could do, there's some other things you're already doing, continue to support redevelopment goals in the cap reuse plan. You know, that's something that you've been working on a long time and will continue to work on. Annexation, and then I'll wrap this up here, this is required by statute, this is also a, you can, but you don't have to. The annexation map, the areas in green are areas which are currently eligible for annexation, but it doesn't mean the city's gonna annex them if they don't support development in that area, but these are areas that meet the criteria or likely would in the future. The blue are other areas where we expect future development, but it's not likely gonna be next year. And we have some things you can do about that. Transportation, we did not do a transportation plan, we tried to recognize the things that the Grand Island area M P O is doing, things that they're updating in their transportation plan. It's a bit of a chicken and egg there, but a lot of what we're doing is, transportation may have more to do with land use than our land use map, so we wanna make sure we're coordinating those things. So you've got that area, Alda's in that area as well. Then implementation, we do that through each of the chapters, but in this chap, in this section, we talk about, hey, how can we use small area plans, like what we did up on Fourth Street, what you're doing in some other areas. That I did discuss capital improvements planning. Now, most cities of your size do a formal capital improvement plan, doesn't mean we're saying you have to do one, but it's probably something you're gonna wanna look at when you have a chance. Then the appendices, that we have the full notes from the town halls in an appendix, that we have the Leland Consulting Group report in an appendix. We have the Fourth Street M S Ps report incorporated by reference, that we've included some of those oversized maps in that appendix, and then the appendix D, as Chad had mentioned, it's a placeholder to come. So this is a way that, that hopefully is a way that we can update it without changing the page numbers and everything else. I've overdone my twenty minutes, I appreciate your patience. This has been a long process, and I just, again, wanna say, we've had great support from your staff and the public through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd, I'm happy that Mrs. Swan is present to hear your compliments about the library.
Public hearing is now open, Gerald Pools, did you wanna speak?
Oh, I could've.
Chad, did you say that?
I didn't, I didn't sign after this one, but.
I went through, I waited through that two-hundred pages, and it's, I think, did I read that correctly, they said that we needed like three thousand housing units in the next decade?
That, yes.
If, if that's the case, it's like, well, Woodsonia will wipe that out, so I hope we never have another T I F project come through the council. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Council's our motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Mr. Brown?
I'm moving, thank you, Mayor, I move to approve twenty-twenty-five tag thirty-eight.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for a very good presentation, taking well over two-hundred pages and making it very understandable, I appreciate that tonight, nice presentation, and ran across Laura McAlune and her husband at the Home and Builder Show this last Saturday, and I said, after I'd just gone through the packet, I said, do you realize we had seven-hundred and twenty-six pages in our packet this week? And she said, yes, I do, and a third of that was right here. So I, I'm one of those guys that I scan every page, but I'm gonna be honest, I scan these two-hundred and fifty pages much faster than I did the rest, because I knew you were gonna be sharing a lot of this tonight. There's a lot of good information in this comp plan. The one question I would ask Chad, just out of curiosity, is why would somebody not pass a comp plan? It's, I mean, it's something we're gonna do, but why would you not pass a comp plan?
Because you've got a roomful of people who are upset about a specific topic within that comprehensive plan, and they're afraid that you may do something that will really upset their apple cart.
See that in smaller communities and larger, or does it matter?
It doesn't really matter, it can be, we are seeing it more and more across the state in counties relative to solar and wind power, and changes that may be incorporated within that comprehensive plan, or may not be incorporated within that comprehensive plan. And so, it tends to be those hot-button issues that people really move forward with. We tried to avoid that with our public participation, with bringing people in, with getting, bringing that information forward, and there's either nobody cares, so there's nobody here, or people in general feel like it's moving in the right direction. As you know, when we have a rezoning and people care, they will be here. If we wanna change the number of people that are allowed to be in a home-based business at a time, people care. Those are the things that really bring people out. The plan, not so much, usually.
If, if I may add, we have tried, one reason it took us a bit longer than we anticipated, we tried really hard to make this your plan, and so, not, this is not John's plan, this is, not even Chad's plan, this is the plan from what we heard people say, we try hard to do that, so hopefully, that's, that's shown through the documentation.
I appreciate that too, because I think that's a good way to put it, that, you know, this is what you said you want us to do, and this is what you'd like to see Grand Island do, and I like that approach, that, that's very wise. But following up on that, part of the matrix, matrices that you have here with projects that are in place, or projects we could do, you, a few times, you went to those pages and said, now, these are things you could do, these are things you could do. Now, is that based on experience you've had in other communities versus what the community said, because you said, these are some things you could do?
That the matrix comes from partly is what people told us they wanted to do, some of those may be things that were in your previous plan, that you continue to do, or we never got around to it. There are, but there are a lot of those based on things we've seen in other communities in Nebraska or of a similar size. Frankly, I've drawn on my experience from the northern tier through the Rocky Mountain States, now, you're not necessarily a tourist community...
Now, you're not necessarily a tourist community, but you have some things with the fairgrounds, and so we try to look at ideas from other communities. These are not the same things that we talked about in Cheyenne, Wyoming, but they got some good ideas. We tried to bring those forward where they were relevant. So you've got things from all over here, but we didn't put in things we thought just to fill in more pages. We got plenty of pages. Thank you.
Very comprehensive plan. So Chad, one more question, as we look at a strategic plan for the city, how much of that would be coming from a comp plan like this? Are we just, when we go to the strategic planning session, it all starts from ground zero? How, do they mesh at all, or how do you?
They really should mesh, and you should be able to take this comprehensive plan, if you adopt it tonight, and then look at strategic ways to implement various portions of this plan. That, we've already stated, these are some of our goals. We've already stated that this is what we're trying to achieve. Now, how do we take those small bites and get those initial wins to make these things happen?
I've been involved over years, prior, my previous life, I guess we call it now, involved in strategic planning for companies, corporations, our factory here in Grand Island, and, and somebody has to own that document. You know, somebody has to own the document or things don't get done. So I don't know, who owns the document here?
This document is owned by, by you primarily, as the council, because it is your, you're adopting it, but then you are passing that down to me, which is why I keep it right behind my chair on my desk, where I can turn around and grab it quickly when I'm talking to somebody, where I can say, this is what council has said the policy is for this particular piece of property, this is where we see it going. Now, does that mean it can't change? No, it doesn't. Someone will come in at some point with a great idea that is entirely different from what we thought about today, and we're going to say, you know what? We like that. We should change this. And if you look at it, even Legacy 34, one of the things you did at the beginning of the Legacy 34 project was change the future land use map to allow for that mixed-use commercial there where they're doing the new neighborhood, or the new downtown feel and commercial development. Why did you do that? Because it made sense at the time to do that, but in 2004, could we have anticipated that? Probably not. So you can make changes to it, but it does give that guide, I'm the one, whoever's sitting in my seat is who is really looking at that and bringing that forward and making recommendations based on it. And then the planning commission is really that gatekeeper to say, yeah, this is, this is consistent with the plan, or it's not consistent with the plan, but it's a really good idea, so we ought to change the plan. So it's an iterative process from that perspective.
Well, again, a very good presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. Pat, did you? So I wanted to make a couple of comments, both to John and Chad. First of all, I think planning is a great thing. For a company that spends over a half a million dollars a day, we really do need to plan because all of this stuff doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of planning, and this is a great document. I'll call it an LBD. It's a living, breathing document. It's one of those that we keep behind you, you know, but it's one of those that we really need to do. But I did have a couple of questions. My first one was on housing. I heard the mayor of Lincoln, Le'irion Gaylord Baird, talk about the, that all-new constru, it's not all-new construction, it's about redevelopment. So have we, in this plan, in our housing plan, is there a piece that's about, we need this many houses to be redeveloped as opposed to new construction?
And I'll let John, maybe I'll let John answer that more specifically, but yes, there is, and in the housing study from two weeks ago, there are, it's new houses and redeveloped, so we have to maintain our existing housing stock as well. There are very specific things in here that do some, that give you the authority to make some changes to our zoning regulations that would encourage things like ADUs, encourage gentle density, allowing duplexes in some neighborhoods. I am going to suggest, and you can, you can tell me whether I should or not, but I'm going to suggest that in our large lot residential zone district, which is northwest Grand Island primarily, Capitol Heights area, those are all half-acre lots. They're all on city sewer and water. I'm going to suggest that we allow the same density of housing as we allow in our R1, which is one unit per 9,000 square feet. Those are all 20,000 square foot lots. That would allow an ADU behind some of those houses with big backyards out there. We only do that if they're hooked up to sewer and water. So well and septic, well, a half acre is not very much property for a well and septic system, but for sewer and water, why not allow a little bit of gentle density, a little bit of increase, a little bit of change in that neighborhood? And I just read Charles Moran's book, Strong Towns' book, Escaping the Housing Trap, last week, and he very strongly makes the point that if you're not changing, you're dying. Trying to keep our neighborhoods exactly the same as they've always been is not, is not a recipe for success, but allowing some sort of change, and for that to happen incrementally, probably is.
We've seen a lot of the, particularly the lot sizes, go from 10,000 square feet, and now they're getting, they're shrinking, you know, to where we're allowing more, more development on lesser-sized lots. We have seen that change over the last 20 or 30 years.
Certainly, and you were here when we approved the R3SL zoning district, and I think Mitch, you asked me a question, well, is anybody going to want to use these? Is anybody going to do this? And my answer at the time was, I don't know, but what I do know is that our current regulations won't even allow it to happen. So the market can't make it work. We need to, by making this change, we can make, we can let the market make that choice. And at this point, the market has made that choice.
One other question I have, and it's my last one, is really, on Chapter 15, it's on the transportation plan, we really didn't include one in here. One of the calls as a council member that I get is about congestion. You know, I get calls about when the state fair is on, the congestion on South Locust, or when school's out, the congestion on 13th and North Road, and particularly like on State and Deers, you know, just that intersection, you know, around Christmas time, I mean, between Walmart and everybody else that's in that area, it's backed up on 281, so there's congestion all over. And so I think that's where I really want to see, whatever we're going to do, you know, I want to see how we can maybe avoid some of the congestion problems, and, and so that's one of the things I wish that we had in, in this plan.
And one of the reasons we don't is because we do have the MPO, we do have a long-range transportation plan that is updated on a five-year basis, and that's a great segue to next Thursday, from 4:30 to 6:30 at the library, there is a public meeting and public open house on the beginning of the next long-range transportation plan, which really is a, an intense opportunity to bring those concerns forward and get those in that plan, which really helps solidify and direct federal funding and city funding to major projects.
Well, I think that's great, and it's, it is a great segue because it's one of those things that I get, get calls on from people, and particularly when they're in the middle of the traffic, probably, but, you know, it's one of those that I wish we would look at, or at least I'd have a better answer for them, and I don't really have a better answer for them.
And some of those things, you look at the improvements with Claude Road, and some of those things that we've done, Old Potash, that have happened over the course of the last seven or eight years, those are things that will impact that Deers and State. Those will, they will positively impact the traffic patterns in that area, because I know, for one, you know, if I was going from Sam's Club to Menards, I had to stay on Deers, right? I don't have to anymore. I can zip around on 18th Street and over to Aspen, Aspen, and up to Capitol, and avoid the light, and so.
But don't tell everybody what that, about that.
No, I'm going to tell everybody, because the more people that use it, the more successful that's going to be.
Okay, well, thank you, John, thank you, Chad, so.
I did have one that you'd asked about on the housing demand. This is another one where we were making incremental changes through the process. We started out with projections in the previous housing study. We had some of those updated during our process, and we had those incorporated, and then with the new housing study that was going on, one of the last changes, as we were about to issue the public review draft, the Table 4.7, Grand Island estimated housing demand, you know, we were trying to keep up as we go, and at a certain point, the law says, I've got to make a public review draft, but then we have to look at it, like Chad said, at what point do we need to update it, and then we'll fix some of those, because the numbers keep changing. We try not, try not to do a lot of that detailed analysis here, because you're already doing it, that you've already got that more detailed stuff, and we have enough pages. What we want to do is say, hey, folks, you need to know about this, because not everybody knows what the housing stuff is going on.
Well, thank you for your presentation tonight.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you, sorry.
No worries. Hey, I just want to add, from what Mitch had said a little earlier, this is just a piece. Tonight you approved for strategic planning. That's the big process, and we'll use this document. We'll use long-range transportation plan, fireman's strategic plan, police strategic plan, meld it all together into this strategic plan, and then we tie the budget to it. So we're going to have measures, and are we going to see some of those goals? So this is just kind of a piece of what we're trying to do this year, so.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 9A, consideration of approving letter of support for essential air service to the Department of Transportation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Mike Olson, I'm the Airport Director at the Central Nebraska Regional Airport. I sure learned a lot here in the last 30, 40 minutes about the comprehensive plan. We do that at the airport, too. It's called a master plan. Last one we did, we blew the, the doors right off of it in four years. So we're doing something right out at the airport. I believe this is the ninth time that I've come in front of the mayors and the city council members over the last 18 years to get concurrence on our essential air service program and recommendation, and I don't know if you have it.
Jeremy, can you switch the screen?
Sorry about that. Thank you. So, yeah, this is, I think, the ninth time I've come in front of the city council and asked for concurrence with the airport's recommendation for our essential air service provider, but before I do that, I just want to go through a little presentation here to keep you all up to date, what's kind of going on. I certainly don't want to spend 45 minutes talking about it, but, so, our current air service is Allegiant, and now we're up to three times a week to Mesa Gateway Airport. It's no longer Phoenix Mesa, it's now just Mesa Gateway Airport, and starting here in about two and a half weeks, we're going to go to four weekly round trips a week to Phoenix Mesa, which is huge for us. We've never had that before, and that'll go for a couple of months. I think Allegiant is test-running, just how much can we push the Grand Island market? It's also, I think they're doing it out of guilt, because I've been browbeating them for many years for, to bring back the Orlando service, so we'll see how this all works out. I'm very optimistic that things will work out just fine. And then twice a week to Las Vegas, and, and then with American, we currently have twice daily to Dallas-Fort Worth and beyond. A little historical perspective, I started here in 2005. You can see how our enplanements have grown. When I talk about the master plan and how we blew the doors off of it, you can see, we did ours in 2008, 2009, and the enpliment numbers kind of went through the roof. This past year, we had just under 68,000 enplanements with the additional Allegiant flights. I counted up the seats for the calendar year 2025. It's very realistic that we can see 73, 74,000 enplanements based on this past year's load factors compared to the number of seats. So I'm very optimistic, we're going to have a new record year this current year. So on January 15th, here just a week and a half ago, almost two weeks ago, Airport Authority Board voted to push forward the American Airlines bid for the essential air service, and frankly, they were the only bid that we received, but it was the only bid that I think we really would have considered anyways. And, and then tomorrow, after assuming that you all vote in favor of that, we will be sending a letter and our recommendation, both on behalf of the city and the airport, to the Department of Transportation to renew American's contract with the DOT for air service here. Just so you all understand that the bid is about $5 million a year. Grand Island, the airport, the city pays $0 on that. That's a direct contract with the Department of Transportation and American Airlines, and the award is for two years. Initially, it'll be with the 65-seat CRJ 700 dual-class regional jet, and there's potential that that can be upgauged to a 76-seat dual-class regional jet as well. And that starts July 1st. Some things about American Airlines, a code-share advantage, where you can buy your ticket once, and you're good all the way to your destination and all the way back. Your bags, everything goes with you. Hopefully, your bags go with you every single time. And some other things there you can read. I like to show these next two maps. You know, we always talk about American Airlines service to Dallas-Fort Worth and beyond. This is what I mean by beyond. All the, you know, domestic cities that they serve is pretty phenomenal, being one of the biggest airlines in the world, at their biggest hub. And then you look at where they go beyond Dallas, beyond our, our borders, whether it's South America, Eastern Asia, or Central or Western Europe, they can get you just about every corner of the world. you just about every corner of the world. And it, talked a little bit about that. And if they can't get you to every, um, country or city in another country, they have partners here, um, Kathy Pacific, British Airways, Iberia, Alaskan, and so on and so forth that are part of the one-world alliance. And, uh, um, again, when you buy a ticket, you fly seamlessly. If you have to make a connection, um, your bags go with you. Um, sometimes you had, if you're making a connection, you may have to go point at your bag and say, this is my bag. That's going on to Barcelona or wherever it might be. So, um, that, that's a good thing. So what, what are the true benefits? Um, you know, when you look at, uh, go back and look at our, um, employment numbers, when we started really going upward was two thousand and eleven, when we did get, uh, the American service through Dallas. Um, and all the, the connectivity that you can do is absolutely phenomenal. We never had that bef- in Grand Island's, uh, long history of having outstanding connection opportunities. Now, American does, um, scheduled our two round trips a day to make the best connections going both east, west, and international out of Dallas. Um, so connectivity is one, brand loyalty, you know, the American Advantage, uh, Miles Program, um, and that really took off when we got the CRJ seven with the dual class. Um, we, we started keeping more people here and less people driving. Um, and, and then another thing is the cost of the proposal. Even though it does not cost us one penny, it does look good that we're, we'll get this service for not much more than we're currently paying and, uh, or that the DOT is currently paying. And I'll tell you, we're real high on the DOT's list with the essential air service. At seventy-five dollars subsidy per passenger, it's one of the lowest in the country. Before I open it up for questions, I just want to recognize I've got two of my awesome staff members here, Debbie Hand, our accounting manager, and then Maggie McDermott, um, is here. Also, um, one thing, and it's, uh, maybe coincidence, that ever since Maggie has started, our social media hits have gone through the roof. And I would encourage you, especially on Friday, to, to look at your Instagram or Facebook for the airport. We'll have some, some good news to share. So, um, with that, I will open up for any questions you may have.
Mr. Nickerson. Um, we need a motion first. Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
Mr. Nickerson.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson.
Yes, first of all, Mike, congratulations on the employment numbers. Those are impressive. I remember the days when you were just trying to get to that magic ten-thousand number to try to get some federal assistance, and that was some, those were some tough years, but look at how far you've come. That's, it's just a wonderful success story. My wife is a traveler in the family. I don't fly a heck of a lot, but I'm at the airport several times a year at eleven o'clock waiting for her to get home at night along with many, many other people. So I know it's a happening place.
I was curious, what do you attribute the success of these employments to? I know you've got a great board, you got great planning. Is it going to places people want to go? Or what, what's attributed to the success that you've seen?
I, I think it's a number of things. You can't just point at one thing. We've had such great community support, um, especially when we were successful in two thousand and eight getting Allegiant here. Um, uh, the current board members, I think there's one that was here, uh, back in two thousand and seven when we went and talked to Allegiant, and they laughed at us, and three months later, they were calling us back saying, oop, we were wrong. Um, and so, um, to answer your question on, Mr. Nickerson, I, I don't have one specific thing to point to, but I think if you, um, start someplace and, and Doug Brown, uh, remembers the early days where we had fly-ins and military appreciation days, is just getting community awareness to the airport. And, and then, you know, it's like a snowball effect. And, um, you gotta let the community know that this is their airport. Come out and see it. It's not just for the rich and famous. It's, everyone uses it. And, uh, um, but, you know, even though we've had success, it doesn't slow us down for wanting more success. And I will tell you, we are pushing and pushing, um, but being a small airport, uh, in the grand scheme of things with two hundred and fifty commercial air carrier airports in the United States, um, and we're probably towards that, you know, bottom half, um, as far as presence in the system. But, uh, um, you know, we're, we're gonna continue to push the boundaries. And I've had a very supportive board to let me do that, and that's what it takes. And, and then I've got great staff like these two that support me. Um, when I'm gone, recruiting and, and whatever else it may be. So for me, it's like a full circle, like the police officer said earlier tonight. When you have great people around you, good things will happen.
I was also wondering, just your opinion, I don't, you don't have the crystal ball any better than I do, but once we get our casino up and running full blast, do you see that of having any effect on the Las Vegas trips? Or do you think the allure of Vegas is there no matter what?
Absolutely zero effect. People go to Vegas for a reason. That's not just to gamble, it's to see shows, to see the bright lights, to, to people watch. It's, it's a big package when you go to Las Vegas. Not to minimize having a, a wonderful hotel and casino here, but it's a different problem.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I think you've done a wonderful job out there, you know, and, and what I see is this is good for Grand Island. Now, Joyce and I do travel, um, from time to time, and we, we always try to fly out of Grand Island if, you know, because I think what you've done is it's price competitive. So it, it's one of those is that you can compare the, the price for flights out of Omaha or Kansas City and, because before this was going, I used, I flew out of Kansas City once in a while, you know? And so we fly out of Grand Island most of the time because I think the price is competitive, and very seldom am I sitting next to someone who's from Grand Island. So when I fly, I'm almost always sitting next to somebody from, from Shelton or somebody from Carney or somebody from some other community that's probably within seventy-five miles a year. And so it's an attraction as well. And you've done a great job with the airport and the way you redone the terminal, and so I think that's, that's wonderful. And then I think the, uh, the connectivity. You, you talked about it on your map. Um, I mean, again, Joyce and I are flying from Dallas to London Heathrow, and then we're flying back through Qatar, Doha Air, Air Base. So we're flying right from Doha back to Dallas, to Grand Island. And so the connectivity is why it now works. It now works for all of us who are traveling. And I've heard a lot of compliments from the business community, too, when they try to bring people into Grand Island for some business activity, for a week, for a day, whatever they're doing, it, it's, it's awesome. So thank you for everything you're doing out there and your team.
Yeah, thanks. And, and that just reminds me of, of another thing, um, that, uh, Councilmember Nick Nickerson asked is why, what has been the success? Another thing is our geography. You look to our east and west, there are, both those communities are competing for the, the same passengers on United Airlines. I wanted to be sure that we had something other than what our neighbors have, and that's a huge draw.
Motion adopted.
Thank you for your presentation. Resolution nine B, approving update of the designated depositories list. Mr. Gleason.
Mayor, thank you, uh, City Council. Um, this is the, um, if you recall, the, the resolution from two weeks ago on January fourteenth. Um, and I have to apologize, I'm still new and learning. I thought, oh, two weeks, I'll be plenty of time. I'll be able to call these new banks and get everything lined up and everything. And then I've, again, I'm still learning that due to the deadlines for a city council, the packet and everything, like you, you don't get the full two weeks to, to do that. And then I also found when I talked to the new banks, um, that we're very, um, excited to get added to it, um, with no questions asked or whatever. Um, when I went back to them, to the five, to the five and asked about, uh, the letter, uh, the thing that, uh, Councilmember Hossi, uh, brought up, then they wanted to, uh, take it to their legal department and, and it, like, if they're gonna do like an official letter, they want to go to their legal department and have it looked at and run it up the chain of command and stuff. And I didn't want to pressure these people to, uh, to have us, uh, an answer by tonight. Um, so what I did with the resolution for right now is I removed the five banks, the five new banks that were on there last time, which was the five at the end. Um, so this one is just the deletion of, uh, banks that we no longer need, and then the name changes that have happened over the past, um, since the last time this was happened was in twenty nineteen, um, when you added one bank. So this one has all of the, um, because I did want to bring it back up because there are Roberts rules and all that. I didn't want to kill the motion and everything, so, or kill the resolution. Um, so it's, it's, I took out the five new banks. It's got all the deletions and name changes. And, um, and then the new banks, I've been letting them know about the resolution number that's on here, and then in the fourth paragraph there, um, they'd need to comply with the Public Funds Deposit Security Act, which, um, and then I checked and looked, the Nebraska Bankers Association, um, has a very good handbook about what, what exactly that, because some of them were asking me stuff, and I'm not a lawyer, didn't want to bother the city attorney, that I was like, here's the resolutions, you can look at the, the Nebraska Legislature page, or you can go to the, the Nebraska Bankers Association has a very good handbook and, um, just giving in the names of the act and the, the res- the statute citation so that they can go look up and I don't misrepresent something to them or, or make a mistake and, and get us in some hot water. So, uh, I've been giving them all the source data. Um, like I said, um, don't want to pressure them, so again, if, I don't know how many I'll hear back from, um, but I would bring those back to you at the new banks at, at one of the February meetings, like I put in the, in the packet. So, um, I guess I'll open up if there's any questions or I'll let you guys.
We'll first see if there's a motion. Uh, Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Mr. Lanfair.
Hi, Snapper.
Any discussion? Mr. Hossi.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thank you for bringing it back and, and, you know, the, the legislation, you know, the council really needs to approve when we're gonna start doing business with other banks. And, and I think it's more not necessarily for us personally, but for disclosure in the community. Um, we don't have very many bad banks in Grand Island, you know, or in the area, so it's, I don't think it's any of that fear, but I think it's just knowing who you're doing business with, and I think that's all part of the public process. And so I'm grateful for the revised list, and I think when you do have corporate name changes with a bank, then yeah, it needs to come back once in a while because it's just a, it's a living, breathing document, as I mentioned earlier on another item. You know, it's one of those things that just needs to come back. And being in front of the public is not a bad thing, you know, we're gonna start doing business because we want to have your five and a quarter percent CD rate. I mean, we want to maximize the, you know, the taxpayers' money as well. So thank you very much for bringing it back, Matt.
Mr. Nickerson.
And Matt, you talked about those that didn't make the cut during this timeframe. Just out of curiosity, do you feel an obligation to them because they were in the initial number of people or?
Yeah, I've kinda.
What you have is enough or just out of curiosity, is it?
No, yeah, I think like what we have is enough and we're, we're doing well. It's just, um, like, uh, Mr. Brown said, as we put out bids for CDs, we have been getting less and less, you know what I mean? Like it's, we've been getting less and less, uh, responses and stuff, so this is just a way to, um, some of them that have, they're really excited to join and do business with the city or at least have a chance to, to do that. So, um, so I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll get some interest, but I think we're fine either way. If, if all five of them come back and say, you know, hey, not for us this time, maybe next time, I think we're still sitting really good with where we're at with, um, like Mr. Brown said, we're doing really good with our investments and, and rates and, um, and our main bank that's doing the sweep account and giving us really good, um, we're having really good returns and stuff. So I think we're, we'll be fine either way. I just wanted to, like, Councilmember Hossi said, we, we need to get rid of the ones that we, we're not gonna do business with and then get the name changes to make sure that we're keeping, you know, so someone's not, well, why is it, you know what I mean? Like you don't want to be, it needs to be on the approved list. It needs to not be, oh, yeah, five years ago, this happened and we haven't had a chance to do it yet. So, um, so again, it's just, um, over time, they kind of buy each other out or they, you know, just merge and all that sort of stuff. So, um, yeah, I think we'll be fine either way.
Yeah. I, I was just curious if you felt obligated because you'd ask them that you wanted to give them a chance to?
Yeah, I felt kind of guilty because I told them it'd be on the fourteenth meeting and then, and so I need to, I, I'm learning, I learn something new every day. I need to not promise until like, you know, I say it'll be on this meeting, not that it'll get pa- you know what I mean? Like I, I don't, can't see the future and stuff, so I need to be better about not promising the action, just promising the, it'll be on the fourteenth meeting and, and we'll, we'll see what happens, so.
So adding an additional five that might be hanging out there is not a bad thing, obviously, and it might turn out they might be one of the best in the long run. You just never know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one more question, Matt. Does this list have to include any of our other, I'll call it, partners in government? I mean, like the Health Board, I think, has money at a, an institution that's not listed here? Is, is the Health Board funding or the golf course funding or, you know, some other funding source? I don't know how close we are as an entity to where if we fund an entity like the Health Department, does, does that bank need to be listed here because our funds are going there as well?
I thought the Health Board was independent of the city, but you're saying we give them money, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we, we provide them public funds once a year. We give them so much money and plus we have board members, you know, and.
Okay.
Things on there, and so they're kind of like a component agency. I don't know technically what the term is.
I could check into that if, like, like you said, the golf course and.
Yeah.
Vinyworks and.
Yeah, because like the, the golf courses, those are public funds, even if it's managed by a third party.
Right, right.
It's still public funds, and I just wanted to make sure that those, wherever those monies are, that they're included in this list as well.
I can double-check that and give you a chance.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Motion adopted. Oh, somebody, someone, let's see. Oh, Mark Epstein, that's right. We're good.
Ordinance ten A, number one zero 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 six, consideration of approving vacation of utility easement, seventeen zero four West Third Street. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances? Mr. Lanfair.
Make a motion that we suspend the state statutory rules considering ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Please vote. Motion adopted.
On the merits of ordinance number 10006, Mr. Schmitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to clean up some easements that were supposed to be vacated in 2002 on the west side of Ace Hardware, down on the corner of Third and Broadwell, to basically remove those, so they have vacant land over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. Is there a motion on the ordinance? Mr. Lanfair?
I move that we approve ordinance 10, uh, 10,006.
Thank you. Mr. Stell?
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance number 10007, consideration of approving adding Chapters 37, Article 6, to the Grand Island City Code for the purposes of establishing a public art commission to reserve Chapter 37, Sections 54 to 59, for future use, to provide for publication and the effective date of this ordinance. First and foremost, is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding this ordinance? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we suspend the statutory rules.
Thank you, Mr. Stell.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mrs. Fisk, please present.
Mayor, members of council, Grand Island City Code currently permits you to establish various citizens advisory boards, commissions, to make recommendations to you on whatever issue you might find appropriate. As the city of Grand Island has continued to grow and evolve, we're seeing a lot more community interest in developing community art projects, making donations of art, developing public art proposals, and historically, the city of Grand Island has kind of handled each of those as they've come in. That's ranged from everything from large-scale sculptures, like what you see in front of the library, to temporary art displays. As those requests keep coming in to various departments, some of whom are more or less skilled in analyzing the merits of public art, the materials necessary, the proper location, safety placements, having a more comprehensive and cohesive way to manage this portion of our community has started to become more necessary. So we've worked with the mayor to develop a proposal for a public arts commission that would be comprised, as you can see, from the ordinance of various community experts in art, whether that's art teachers who may have interest in public art, folks who can make advisements about the proper landscaping around an art project, or the materials that might be more or less appropriate for certain surfaces. So ideally, the hope is that then a public art, the public art commission could help the city and its various departments process these requests for, to accept donations, make solicitations of public art should the need arise, and generally be posed to be your experts in handling these sorts of projects as they come forward. We've developed for you the proposal for incorporation into city code to create that framework, very possible, like most boards and commissions, that as this becomes a living, working board, future changes might be made, might be needed to make this as functional as possible. But to at least get us started, largely modeled this off of the city of Omaha's Art Commission, their Parks Department hosts their art commission, and has been very generous in sharing all of their assorted materials, their lessons learned, their success stories, their struggles, so we could try to craft something that is right-sized for the city of Grand Island and its needs. So if you have any questions about that, let me know.
First, see if there is a motion. Is there a motion concerning this ordinance? Mr. Lanfair?
I move that we approve motion, ordinance 10, uh, 10,007.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
I second that we approve motion 10,007.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson?
Carry on this commission, and I don't have it in front of me, didn't read all the details, but I'm just gonna pick your brain, because you'll be the expert on this. Do you see this commission having a council liaison, like of other commissions, or is this gonna be a little independent group out there, and, and are they bringing recommendations to the council, or is this just a group helping organize the whole art projects of the city?
So this would be largely that sort of advisory board that would then help the city determine whether or not to accept donations. Ideally speaking, they'd make recommendations to various departments, council, depending on the size and scope of the project, but would be that, kind of, that focal point. Right now, the, we've drafted it so that commission members can't serve on council, could you be there as an ex officio member, come and attend when projects interest you? Absolutely, but this would be designed to be that panel of experts.
That panel of experts would then give their recommendation to whom?
To you. Depending on the scope and scale of the project, they may make recommendations there, they may help a department, for example, if we were to build a new city building and desire to incorporate a public art component, they may assist that department in the solicitations for artists, developing those calls for artists. So largely, hopefully, be a collaborative process there, but giving them some independent authority to use that expertise in making those recommendations.
I saw somebody earlier in the chambers here that's probably interested in that, and I see they're gone, I don't know if they were here for this or another reason, but when we look at rail side and some of the art that's down at rail side, would that be, I don't even know how that got approved, don't remember, but there is some art down there, would that be similar examples of what this commission would be doing? When you say "public," art for the public comes to them.
Uh, pub, art in public spaces and public buildings, whether that is a sculpture in front of City Hall, or a sculpture in a city park, or a photography display at the library, those public, those art in public spaces using public resources. So you're not gonna govern the art I hang in my living room, but you would help, they would help create that guidance. Public art tends to have a lot of, especially outdoor public art, a lot of very specialty requirements, you know, whether that's graffiti-free paint, or making decisions as to when an artwork has aged enough that it needs to be replaced, what that life cycle is, just some of those decisions that, of course, you as council are prepared to accept a donation, but then managing its life cycle is not always within the purview. Analyzing things like whether it's insurable, whether it's properly placed to adjust for safety, whether landscaping is sufficient, those sort of nuanced decisions that don't really have a home in any one of our respective departments, they don't really, no, no department, whether you have a building or not, is really prepared to manage those, those things, and so this kind of would serve to that cross-department functionality, those joint ventures a little bit better.
An artist that is getting up in years, and he had asked at one point, he had paintings, I think he's a painter, that he wondered if he could donate them to the city, and of course, I said, I have no idea, but this commission would be one that could probably look at that?
Yeah.
Because he's, he's wanting a place to go with some of his art that might be long-lasting for people to enjoy.
Ideally, they'd be able to figure out whether there's a proper home for that, where that might be, whether that should replace a piece of artwork that's already there, those sort of decisions that, you know, take a specialty touch.
Right, and, and you and the mayor, and whoever thinks this would be a good thing for the city, then?
I think anytime we can lean on experts and interested public, interested citizens and leverage those community members who have those expertise, then, you know, it's an opportunity.
Mr. Stell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you like, enlighten me or the council? How this would work, like the Hornaday thing at, at Stolly Park, their memorial, and then, like, the sculptures downtown, how you would, how this council would work, or?
So, so really fundamentally, they'd be a body that could help hear that proposal to donate, could help provide advice, ask questions about the terms and conditions of the donation, whether it's appropriate for the place it's suggested to donate. So, for example, if I suggest donating a sculpture to a park, they may be able to analyze that the landscaping isn't appropriate, or maybe I've chosen as the artist a material that won't weather well outside, be able to do that ongoing analysis to see if this donation fits the city's needs, interests, if it's compatible with its proposed location, maybe make proposals to, hey, I know you want to donate it here, but this place might be better, kind of do all that nuanced analysis that doesn't always have a home, so that way we can incorporate those a little easier, and have a streamlined process for those donors and those artists, too, so they're not stuck calling various departments, trying to find an expert in this all, they'd have a home and a streamlined place to go, to make those offers as well.
I, I know we have a lot of talent in the city, just a second. Lights on, but, anyway, would they be able to object a placement of an art that, that some sculptures may consider offensive, because there's different tastes for different folks, and what, and that's why you like to go to art museums, is, is to see that the art works, but to certain people, the, the art might be a little offensive.
Part of what this art commission would do is analyze, again, what is and isn't appropriate for places. Typically, with public art, that's not necessarily an appropriateness, it may be not putting a climbable sculpture in the middle of a park that a child can climb on, not putting something too close to an intersection, not having something that has landscaping planted. So typically, their discussions will be much less content-driven, much more context-driven, as far as whether this is the right art for the right place, for the right reasons. And so that's some of why the membership proposed has been crafted that way, is it's usually those considerations that actually cause more headaches than, than content does, typically.
But they have to give advice to the artist community group, and also to council?
Yep.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I think my concerns are the same as Mark had, I, I think my concerns would be that they report back to the council on anything that might be considered offensive, you know, because those are public, then, public decisions about what should be placed where, and I like those coming back to the council, because I think, I have certainly experienced people who thought art, and it didn't meet my definition of art, and I, you know, and so I think that I, I don't want to open up a stream that doesn't come past the council when it comes to somebody's objection to those, to their sensitivity, and I think that the council needs to be a part of.
So if you look on, I think it's 3769, Section 4, one of their duties would be to advise city council of the artistic merit and value of the paintings, sculptures, and other fine arts offered to the city for donations purchased or proposed disposition by the city, so I suppose if that's a matter of artistic merit, that would be one of their duties to advise you on.
Okay.
I find most times I just don't understand it, but rather than?
Okay, thank you very much, that, that meets what I'm asking for.
Okay.
I asked Mrs. Fisk to draft this, because I am the one who's asked to determine whether something has artistic merit, and whether something should be accepted by the city, and I do not have the expertise to make those decisions. So I want to thank you for spending a lot of ti, you spent a lot of time to draft this, this is kind of new and novel for us, how to handle public art, and the request to either construct public art or to receive it, so I appreciate all your effort in this regard.
Motion adopted.
Ordinance number 10008, consideration to amend Chapter 18, mechanical, of Grand Island City Code, to amend mechanical fitter contractor licensing requirements, provide consistent provision with Chapter 26, plumbing, and adopt, and adopt Chapter 11 refrigeration of the 2022, 21 Uniform Mechanical Code. Please present.
Suspend the rules, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to suspend, well, I need to ask if you want to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances. Mr. Lanfair?
I move we suspend the state statutory rules considering ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Conley?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance number 10008, please present on this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to amend Chapter 18, the mechanical city code. Some of those changes involve adopting a Chapter 11 refrigeration of the 2021 Uniform Mechanical Code. We did not originally adopt that when we adopted the code, but with the addition of a dedicated mechanical inspector, and some of the newer refrigerants used in these systems are some semi-flammable, so the board discussed that and decided that maybe it's time that we start enforcing that to ensure they're safely installed and to code. The next thing is the licensing, changes to the licensing exam application. So we've contracted with IAVMO to do the standardized examination, and they will administer those exams. Right now, the board has to give approval for applicants to take that examination, and they only need once every three months. So in effort to try and make this truly flexible to the applicants, I'm asking that we change the code to allow the chief building official to give approval for those exams, to take that IAVMO testing. So they, they will be able to take that test when they're ready, not have to do it once a quarter.
Thereby streamline the process.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And Carney, Hastings, Lincoln, Columbus, they already, already use this. The next change we're proposing is aligning Chapters 18 and 26 requirements between those two codes, they're, they're relatively similar, there are provisions, and there, the wording's a little bit different, this is just to kind of clean it up and make sure that a little bit more consistency between the two chapters. And the last change for mechanical code is to provide provisions for license reciprocity. So what we would do there, anybody that's valid license as a master journeyman, mechanical fitter by any municipal jurisdiction, they could request to have reciprocity, and then have it vetted and reviewed by the chief building official for that. Also, we could go into a reciprocal agreement with another jurisdiction like Carney that has a program that is similar to ours, and we can do that, in that way, we could say we will go ahead and honor each other's license without having to vet it, knowing that their program is already, meets our standards. So the mechanical board has reviewed these adoption requests and recommends that they be approved.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the merits of ordinance number 10008? Mr. Brown?
Move that we approve ordinance 10,008.
Thank you. Mr. Conley?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance number 10009, consideration to amend Chapter 26, plumbing, of the Grand Island City Code, to amend plumbing contractor licensing requirements and provide consistent provision with Chapter 18, mechanical. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances.
Mr. Brown?
I, I second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
On the merits of ordinance number 10,009, is there a motion? I'm sorry, you need to present.
Yeah, this is similar to, to last presentation, this is for Chapter 6 plumbing. It says the same changes for licensed examination, and to align both Chapters 18 and 26, and for license reciprocity. We have taken this to the plumbing board, and they have reviewed these changes, and they have recommended approval.
Thank you. A motion is in order. Mr. Stell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval, ordinance number 10,009.
Mr. Lanfair?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
We have two final items on our agenda. They are executive sessions, the first being executive session to discuss strategy and negotiation authority with respect to a prospective real estate purchase by the Public Works Department, the second is an executive session to discuss strategy for negotiations regarding city-owned real estate and associated terms. Council members, is there a motion to go into executive session for these two executive session agenda items? Mr. Stell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go into executive session for the two items listed.
Mr. Conley?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We are going into executive session at 9:28 PM.